Hi and welcome to the show. Well, today I'm proud to have with me one of our city council members, and he's a successful entrepreneur in this city. I'm sure you know him, and if you don't, you'll be glad you're here to get to know him and his dedication, his passion for what he does in both his business and on the city council. Adam Garvin, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me, Ken.
Well, those people that don't know you, let's just back up a little bit and tell us about your roots. Did you come from the east coast? Where were you born?
I came from the old hospital where Walgreens was.
You were born at Walgreens. It's one of those people. All right.
One of the Walgreens.
And family here for a long time?
Yeah, I'm the third generation here locally. My grandfather sold cars locally for Frederick Chevrolet on Third Street, Gilbert Tilbury, which is now Chuck Colvin Ford, the Larson Brothers. My dad was part of Jeff Conkey's Midway Motors and Ocean Way RV. And my mom's worked at Oregon Mutual for a while, about 25 years-ish. And her parents own the gas station and general store out in Bolston, Oregon.
So if there's a local, if anybody's a local, it's you.
Yep.
He's got that claim.
I do have that claim.
And now I noticed a theme there. Grandfather and father in car business. And so maybe not a surprise that you're in the car business.
Nope, I've always had a passion for cars. And around holidays when I was little, I couldn't remember my uncles and aunts' names, but I could remember what car they drove.
For example, what did it like?
My uncle Warren had a Duster that I liked quite a bit.
Oh, that's funny. So Uncle Duster. So how did you get into, you know, your, tell us about your business and tell us about how you got into it.
So my business started as just a high school marketing project and business plan. And did that my junior year of high school. And that made a business card out of that project. And I worked at Dutch Brothers at the time as a graveyard and a night swing shift floater. And so I would hand out business cards when I'd see dirty cars. Just kind of did that evenings and weekends.
So you started your business as a junior in high school?
Yeah, informally. And then I got paid for books and things. So I went to Linfield to be an accountant. Decided that wasn't what I wanted to do, so I dropped out. And then I made a promise to my mom and my great grandma that I would go back to school if I wasn't doing something by the time I was 25.
Yeah, had that work yet. By 25, you had something?
By 25, I was in my fourth year full-time in business and had three employees.
Wow. So from your, you kept at the detail business from your junior year, just kind of on the side even while you were in college?
Yep.
And then you just said, heck, I'm gonna do this for real?
Yep, it was Tax Day, April 15, 2008, was my first day full-time.
And you opened, when did you get a, I guess at first you just had people come over to your house and you did it in the driveway?
Yep, I did it in my mom's driveway and in the garage. And then I rented out some space in a pole barn from a fellow entrepreneur, Corey Knutts with Valley Green Landscaping. And then my first actual shop, I rented out from my current landlord that I still have, Wade Miller. And I rented that out in September 2007.
In the location behind Figaro's?
Actually, that one I rented out about five years ago. But my first shop was back behind Mazatlan by S&amp;W Electric.
Yes, yes. And now you're behind Figaro's and what's the insurance company there? State Farm?
Behind Papa Murphy's and State Farm. Used to be Figaro's though, so you weren't off.
All right. So you're right behind there and you detail cars?
We were a full-service vehicle protection shop. So full-service detailing, ceramic coatings, window tinting, paint protection film, spray and bed liners. If you're spending 50 grand plus on a rig, we can make it stay looking new for years to come. So you don't have to do that again.
And you have some experience in doing that?
That I do.
Oh my gosh. And so I just, you know, you came to the studio today. You're on your way, you're picking up parts to get back. And there's people working there right now while you're off being on TV. But it's on your mind, right? I mean, there's a difference between people that have employees and people that don't. Because you're constantly, you're training them, you're trying to help them be the best they can be. You're replacing them when they move on, various reasons. It's quite, what have you learned about employees, having employees?
Having employees has taught me a lot about myself and leadership in general. And that, you know, I prefer to lead from the front, not from the back. So I like to be a doer and not just a sayer or a finger waver. So I'm not against getting on a prep rack, you know, and still washing a car or picking up a buffer and buffing paint. I do have staff that can handle almost all facets of the business. But I believe that leadership, you know, there's a difference between being a boss and being a leader. And, you know, I think in this day and age, some age groups get a bad rap, whether that's older or younger. And I think it's they, none of them are bad people or bad workers. It's just how do you motivate them? So what motivated a boomer isn't gonna motivate a millennial and vice versa. So it's being versatile and that makes sure that you connect with your workforce. And I have an employee that's over 50 and I have an employee that's fresh out of high school. So.
Well, either way, I would think the boss picking up the buffer and doing the job that comes from, how many years' experience do you have now?
I first picked up a buffer when I was 13 and worked on an RV at a dealership that my dad ran.
And you're a young 30, yeah. 13, okay, 33, that's 20 years.
Yep, and taken a lot of certifications. I'm big on continued education. I'm big on personal and professional growth with my employees. A couple of years ago, I decided to go against the mold and bring in full benefits for my employees. So we're the only auto appearance shop in the county that provides full benefits and pay time off. And that was one of those things, just connecting with your employees and understanding the challenges they face. So.
We know how that hits me as a potential customer is, if I know that the employees are getting benefits like that, they're probably happy to work there. And an employee that likes their job, that's who I want working on my car. So just from my impression, I think that's an excellent, excellent choice.
Yeah, it's been good and the employees definitely appreciate it. And I appreciate that they have the ability to go to the doctor, get a prescription and not be stressed about, you know, an urgent care fee or an ER visit or something like that. They can have a primary care provider and be proactive about it. And we run Tuesday through Saturdays so they can make all those appointments on Mondays and doesn't disrupt the workflow.
That's fantastic. And I'm just thinking the practicality there. They're covered. They're not maybe a car breakdown away from, you know, bankruptcy or whatever, not being able to pay the rent and under that kind of stress. So they're much better able to show up and.
Yeah, they can focus on the job at hand and not the bills they have in the juncture at home.
And so therefore, the work environment is much more pleasant too when people are feeling like they're doing okay?
Yeah.
That's great. That's great. All right. Well, I got you in here as city councillor, but it's great to learn what, I think the fact that what people have, I've learned about you right now is that you are capable, a capable leader. And the fact that you've had a successful business here in town for so many years makes me think like, well, that's a guy I'd like, I think would be a good city councillor. So let's talk about that. How did you make that? How did that idea pop into your head that I'm gonna, I wanna do that?
So I've always been, you know, interested in politics and I've always kept a keen eye on what's going on. Initially, out of high school, that was more on a national level. And then I realized the amount of money that it takes to have an effect on that. So I focused my attention more on state and county level. And still, as you know, in the races that you've ran, that takes it an insane amount of money to have your voice be heard sadly. And so in 2013, some cannabis legislation that was going through the city with Oregon being a home rule state, got me off the couch and into the council chambers. And there are some emergency clauses in there and I didn't understand how that worked. And so at that time, I felt the city was trying to pull a fast one because they were having meetings that weren't technically on the second or fourth Tuesday of the month. When in reality, that wasn't that case. It was just meeting deadlines the state legislator had set out. And so I started attending council meetings to see what was actually going on. And I thought maybe I would run someday, but I didn't know when that would be. And I needed to make sure that it balanced family life and work life and still gave me enough time to serve the city and not just warm a seat, you know, have the time to read the packets, have the time to meet with constituents, have the time to make meaningful effective policy.
So you sat there in the audience for, in the city council for how long? Before you started, before you ran?
I pulled paperwork to run, to get my signatures to run August of 2016 and was elected November 16. And I attended my first council meeting February 2013.
So about three, four, four years?
Yeah, three and a half years.
Yeah. So you knew what you're talking about when you said, I wanna be a councillor?
Yeah. I mean, the first year I attended council meetings, there was a lot of things that were just over my head and I didn't, you know, grasp why we had this many committees and task force and why do we need all that?
And the budget process?
And the budget process. And, you know, when we have those budget meetings, there's so much to cover that it moves fast. If you haven't looked at that budget ahead of time, it's like you're in a wind tunnel. But after you've attended, attended a budget meeting or two and then you get that budget ahead of time and have time to look through it and see the differences and what the different department has they're recommending, it does make sense.
So you mentioned one thing I'd like to just pause on. Being able to meet this commitment as a councillor and have it not impact your family life. In other words, business is going well. It's, you have time for this now. Maybe you don't have time for it comfortably, but it's not over impacting your family. You brought a picture of your family.
I did, yes.
Can you bring that up, Caroline? There they are.
So the little guy, that's Carter, the fourth generation. He's really into cars as well. He's about a year and a half in that picture. He's a little over two now. That's my other half, Trish. My German Shepherd, Carrera, and my son, Aiden.
And Aiden, a car guy?
He is, to an extent, but he's more into engineering and building things. But very nice kid and he's taken up karate in the last year and a half. So he trains with Tony Olveroff Alpine. And went to Nationals, or the USA Open in Vegas in April.
Oh, that must have been a fun.
It was a fun time for him, yeah. And he's done well. He actually just recently had another promotion and got another bill. So he's pretty excited. He's in eighth grade at Patton right now.
So life is good?
Life is good. We've had some health issues with Carter. They've somewhat stabilized now. So. But yeah, overall, life is good.
So this is who you're leaving behind at home when you're at these city councils that sometimes go till?
Midnight.
Midnight? Oh my gosh. And for all that, you get paid how much?
It is 100% volunteer.
Yeah. And yet, when anything's wrong in the city, it's your fault. I mean, that's what you get, right? Is like, fix this, doggone it. And I'm gonna stay here and yell at you until you do.
You're the one up on the dais and, you know, that's, I knew that getting into it. So yeah, there's definitely been some pretty vocal voices in the last year on some issues. And part of that is just the speed at which government moves isn't, you know, fast enough. And I'm 100% in agreement that government does not move fast.
Yeah. So these issues come up and a lot of times they're expressed with a lot of emotion. Have you developed that? Tell me about what it's like to try to be listening past the emotion and not have it start to distract you. Is that a skill that you've had to develop or it came naturally?
Yeah, it is a skill you need to develop. And, you know, it's, the main thing is that when you are speaking of public policy and you're trying to form policies, you need to make sure that that policy is the policy that you want, whether you're up there or somebody else up there 20 years from now. If that's good policy, then it should stand the test of time. And if it's voted on by emotion or by knee-jerk reactions, it's not gonna stand the test of time. It's not gonna be constitutional. It's, it's gonna get the city in lawsuits, which is gonna cost all of us taxpayers money.
Well, let's talk about some of the issues that are up right now. Just, I'll let you free-wheel. What's top of your mind of what's going on in the city that you, that you're, that you're interested in?
Probably the most exciting thing, I think, going on in the city would be, we just went out for a feasibility study for fire district consolidation.
What is that, how would that be different than what we're doing now?
So right now, every, every district in the, in the county has their own boards. You have Amity Rural Fire Protection District. You have Sheridan, West Valley, which are kind of collaborating right now as well. You have McMinnville. McMinnville and Amity just entered intent agreement for some administrative sharing, but they still have their own fire board. You have Lafayette, which Lafayette, City of Lafayette, just like McMinnville operates as their own fire district. And then we in McMinnville also have the McMinnville Rural Fire District. You have Carlton, it's fire board. And so it's basically seeing what consolidation would look like on those fronts and what the tax rate would have to be to be effective and get the taxpayer more bang for their buck.
So the idea is to get some efficiencies, take out redundancy, get some efficiencies so that the budget balance is better?
Exactly. And better response times. So, I mean, the main thing is right now with all volunteer departments and with how things have evolved over time, people can't respond like they used to be able to. I was a volunteer firefighter at one point in time. And we're still gonna have volunteers. But as far as a structured fire at noon on a Wednesday, you just can't get the volunteer response like you used to be able to. So right now with the paid staff we have, you have medics responding to, to meet staffing requirements before you can make entry into a building. So it's, it's basically consolidation would allow us to have, you know, more, more paid staff and better response times that could better serve the citizens of anybody that comes on board.
So right now, those improvements would help us be more safe. I mean, your people are, they're waiting for medics to arrive so that the staffing is proper, that you can enter a building. So you're standing there waiting, waiting, waiting.
Yeah, so they might be on scene. They might have pulled the hose line. But it's two in, two out by national standards. So you need to have people outside, ready and willing to go in for the people that are going inside if there's an issue that happens.
And sometimes you're short-staffing and the fire's not getting fought like it could be.
Yeah, it's basically you're, you're on a defensive standpoint until you get enough bodies there to be on an offensive standpoint.
So this is a big deal.
Yeah. So, you know, you wanna be able to show up on scene and fight fire and not just put a hose in a window and try and knock it down.
Now, this goes to the larger issue of a city paying for itself. It's a, it's a trick. We've got, the model is, the city needs to grow to get the system development fees so that we can afford to maintain what we already have, basically. It's kind of like a Ponzi scheme, almost, a shell game of, not a shell game, but a Ponzi game. We need more growth so we can maintain the asphalt that we already have. It just seems like a tough one.
To an extent. So STCs can't go for maintenance. STCs go for infrastructure. But tax revenue goes for maintenance. So as growth happens, you get more taxpayers. So you can keep taxes, the tax rates lower to generate more tax revenue because you have more people paying. So you have a choice, basically, of do you want less people paying taxes, which means you need higher taxes to cover that same number?
Per capita.
Or do you want more people, which then spreads out the burden and each person gets to pay a little bit less?
Now, I think in comparison to other cities, McMinnville's done an excellent job at being solvent because of good leadership. But cities struggle in general with this very thing you're talking about. Say the, the water, the sewer infrastructure is aging. It needs to be upgraded. Federal regulations continue to make water quality issues more stringent. You have to meet these standards. You have to invest money to do that. So the price for the water goes up. People, like taking Yamhill, price of the water sewer goes up. Then people start going, boy, this is too expensive. I don't wanna live here. So the population stagnates, prices go up. Just as you say, the price of everything goes up. Then people go, oh, it's even higher now. No, I really don't wanna live here. And that's a spiral down. This is the, this is what all cities are just trying to stay out of that whirlpool. Does it feel like that sometimes here?
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of facility deferred maintenance going on. We have another exciting thing in the city right now is we're about to put together a committee to look at what Park and Rec looks like. And do we want one big campus-type facility? Do we want to renovate the pool or how's that gonna look? So councillor Geary and I are gonna be on that interview panel for putting that committee together with Susan Muir and a couple of other staff members. So.
When I talked to Susan, she says, yeah, we are right up against it keeping the infrastructure functional. And some people feel like, where's all the money going? You know, nobody's hiding money under floorboards.
There is no money hidden under floorboards.
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at our budget, our, our labor cost is, you know, the biggest item in our budget. But that's not because we're overstaffed by any means. I mean, we've always ran lean as a city. Kent Taylor and Ed Gormley ran the city very lean. And to their credit, when the economy downturned in '08, we had the reserves to maintain levels of service when a lot of other cities, you know, cut it by a third or more. So that's something that's overlooked, I think, a lot by taxpayers and citizens is that when the downturn happened, yeah, we, we froze some spending, but we didn't have to lay off a third or half of our workforce and eliminate service levels and things like that. So.
So there's been some great leadership that has gotten us to where we are. I think another example of that is the water infrastructure here from McMinnville, the reservoirs that we, that we have. It seems to me that would be a responsibility that would, you would feel like, what should I be doing right now to do the kinds of things that people have done in the past to keep, get us in the position we are now? And I, it's my responsibility to have the vision to keep it that way in the future. Is there something that comes to mind that, that's on your radar in that way?
So that's one of the things that got me off the couch and onto the dais was that I looked at our bonds and our master plans and realized that things are expiring and that we as a city are at a fork in the road. You know, a lot of those things were passed in the 90s and they're coming off the tax rolls. And so how are we gonna move forward? And what's that look like for the next couple of generations? And so I think, you know, the parks master plans, that's expiring. Do we roll that into a new rec master facility? Does, is a library included in that? Is a pool included in that? Do we start irrigating our parks more in the summertime? Or do we stay status quo with them and not irrigate them? So our maintenance costs is less? And if we did irrigate them, you know, how much would that cost? So there's definitely some, some things in front of us. We just finished the transportation bond, you know, that passed in '14. And we have one project left on that, the old Sheridan Road.
Where it comes into that light over by Lowe's?
Exactly.
That light's a nightmare. I wanna, I just wanna turn right, darn it. Get all these left turns out of the way, please. It only takes 10 feet. So that's coming up, huh? I'll be happy when that happens.
That'll be getting worked on this upcoming construction cycle.
Yeah, great. Good news, good news.
We have a master plan out at the airport that we're waiting on doing.
Airport's a big deal. I mean, as far as our city's future, what's this master plan about?
So basically, we'll look at, the first thing we're gonna do is this year, we're gonna look at commercial standards. And so that basically says what can be out there? And, you know, what is the standard to be at the airport? Kind of the, the rulebook. And then the master plan is what's the layout look like?
And you must bring in experts, consultants to help you with this. I mean, where do you start yourself?
So a master plan, I believe, has about a $500,000 cost. And so we rely on federal money and state travel organ dollars from lottery dollars.
To bring in the, bring in the experts?
Yeah.
Bring in people that do this for their.
So like the new, the new runway that we just got, which took a little bit longer than we had hoped or expected. That was 90% federal dollars. And then we are required to match 10% as a city. But the state of Oregon took care of our 10%. So we got that new runway for almost nothing. Other than we didn't get the, the fuel cells because traffic was down because we didn't have a main runway. So there's always back-end costs. But as far as actual costs for the project, we have a taxiway project with a $2.1 million price tag to refurb some taxiways. That'll be federal dollars. But we just got word that we didn't get any discretionary spending from the feds for that. So maybe next year?
Okay, just gonna wait then?
Yep. And we as a city just don't have money to put into that. But there's a three-mile lane master plan project underway right now, which takes into account some airport to some extent. And so that's also an opportunity zone for the private sector. Investors can get tax-free growth on their investment. So that'll be exciting to see what happens out there. We got a, you know, wide, wide track of land there between the airport and the hospital on what could be.
So this, let me back up. $500,000 to create the master plan? And this is gonna be federal money?
Yeah.
And when do you think that'll start really kicking into gear?
We had hoped for it to start 2021, but could be a little bit later than that.
Okay. So that's a big deal in the future. It sounds like a ways down the road. First a plan that won't start till '21 and then implementation.
Yeah. I would say the most exciting thing out at the airport in the last few years has been that we as a city used to kind of have some limited lease terms for people that wanted to put up hangars. And now people can, can get 30-year leases and they can get extensions providing their building meets inspection requirements that it's still a safe building to have out there. And so we've seen some offers for new private hangars to go up, which is growth. So.
So it's more attractive for the person to put up a private hangar?
Exactly. So before, a lot of that private hangar money was getting put up in Aurora or Hillsboro just because we didn't have the contract language that somebody was looking for, for a private hangar. But we've revamped that and now we have people interested in putting up some hangars.
Well, that's quite a future. Are you term limited as a councillor?
No.
You'll be there as long as you want to and as long as you keep getting elected. You're up for reelection next year?
Yes. 2020 is the end of my current term and I would need to run the November election cycle.
Are we hearing a, I'm going to do that or not?
I've always said since I got elected that I'll make that determination in May.
Say that again?
I'll make that determination in May of my election year.
All right.
It's just gonna come down to a balance of my youngest son's health and.
I see.
Family and, and business. So, you know, looking at it holistically and making sure that if I'm gonna run, that I have the time to be there and have the time to be effective. So I don't wanna be on the dais just to be on the dais.
Well, from what I've seen, Adam, knowing you and seeing you on the city council and our conversation now, I hope that works out. I just think you're the right fit and the best of luck to you. And thanks for being here today.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ken.